Go ahead and call this meeting's order. First of all, let's do the roll call.
Councilmember Haper?
Here.
Hoag?
Here.
Barberas?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Blackwell?
Here.
Chipman?
Here.
Okay, and I'm gonna start off and say that we're having a minor adjustment to the agenda tonight. Once we get past the old business, there's going to be an awards award given. And so, just wanted to let everybody know that.
Mayor? And I would ask that we delete the, authorize the helper act support letter off of the agenda as well.
Okay. We're going to remove item number five from the agenda for tonight. Okay, and we don't have a minister here to give the invocation, and so we'll, if Chief Smith would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, do we hear any commission reports?
Always. The library had a phenomenal month. In November, they had 3,205 checkouts with 3,672 patrons going in and out of their doors.
Wow.
Sent out seventeen new cards and renewed sixty-seven new cards. And they have almost four hundred books that are brand-new in rotation from last month. They also did their Christmas open house where they had two hundred and forty-two people walk through the doors on Saturday alone, two hundred and fifty-five on Friday, and then two hundred and twenty-three on Thursday. So they had quite the turnout, and they were very pleased with that. As far as the board is going, they're working through their own policy manuals, updating those, which seems to be the right thing to do at the end of the year, update all of our policies, and just as we're gonna do here at the city. And they're just very excited. Things to look forward to are, they're doing their last book in the series where they do "Let's Talk About It." And this next book coming up on February first is Billie Lynn's Long Halftime Walk. And I think she said the professor comes from BSU in this case to do the talk back about it, so. And then they also received a $2,000 grant for the summer reading program, and they're already getting enrollment started for that, that kind of stuff, as they put together their program. So, very busy at the library as always.
I have a report from the Economic Development Commission. We have filed our nonprofit paperwork and have a nonprofit EIN, and so a board has been established for the Main Street Weezer program. And we will be meeting tomorrow to kind of do a wider identification of exactly what the Main Street is going to encompass. And we'll be reporting on that in January, but we're excited to have that kicked off. And once we're nonprofit, we've got lots of good things to bring to the public. I also would like to report from an economic and a council perspective. Today, the council, planning and zoning, the Economic Development Commission, the historic preservation, all met in the council chambers to go through the comprehensive plan, which we will be, this is available if anybody wants to take a look at it. This is kind of a visioning, a guidance for the city, all of those entities moving forward. It was an open meeting, so we had a few guests attend as well, but really appreciated the feedback and the discussion about how to implement this as we move forward. And I think we all decided the mayor's gonna start it off by designating where and who needs to be engaged in this to kind of get it started. So I just want to say thank you to all of the people that attended today. I think it was a great meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any committee reports?
Mayor? Excuse me. We, I was only saying, we have gentlemen here with us tonight. I thought they were gonna be on the agenda, but I think they're gonna be on for next time. What I want to do is just give you an overall idea of what they're meeting on. It's requesting the use of the Laird property for tractor pulls. They're in the rodeo grounds now.
Yeah, they can present it.
Okay, good. You wanna come on and say a meal or a talk?
Just give them one of those. So, thanks for welcoming us anyway. The last couple of years, we have put together a truck and tractor. My name's Corey Petro, and I'm with Complete Pulling Sled, and we are out of Payette. Last couple of years, we have been involved in the rodeo grounds. The event that we're putting on has gotten too large. So we're got to the point now where it's an invitation-only. We have limited amount of trucks that we can fit in there, obviously, you know that the grounds are really small. We've got to the point now to where we thought maybe we can move this down to Laird's place and down where we can have a little bit more room. We went and looked at the property, we laid out the map that you have there in hand. This is something that maybe we'd like to consider, maybe bring it to you guys if you guys weren't considerate of this. This has nothing to do with the Mud Drags, that's a whole different entity. We are not involved in that at all. So this would be just a truck, a tractor pulling event. So we'd come in, we are 100% self-contained. So we bring in the equipment, we put the show on. It's gonna be a little challenging for us, as well as everybody else, probably the first one out of the gate, as we bring in roughly about 3,000 people. The seating is a little rougher out there. So that would be where we'd have a different avenue of bringing in spectators. So we'd probably bring your own seats type of thing for the first year or so. We're interested in if we do make the funds that we need to make on that, that we can bring in and maybe improve the grounds. We have Lonnie Riggs, which he's the owner of Laser Lamp Construction. He's totally behind it, he's a Weezer native, so he's all behind us on putting money back into the town. So if it's something that we can get a little bit bigger, we have the people that want it to grow, and we have the participants to make it grow, we just have to have a bigger place. So just presenting it to you, right or wrong, there's no rhyme or reason for us. Whether it works out for you or doesn't work out for you, that's fine with us too as well. But we gotta present it to you because we're at that point right now to where people really want to keep it Weezer. All of our pullers love coming to Weezer. So it's a pretty cool thing. I know we've heard from local townspeople that they've sold out of a lot of stuff, all the hotels get rented, and it's just a cool thing. We'd like to keep it here, obviously, you know, we're from Payette as well, and there's not a lot going on in this area. So we don't go no farther than Emmett, we've kept this sled here in the Treasure Valley. We have taken it out of town, it's just not worth it to us. So, the sport's grown here. Years ago, there was a guy here, a lot of you might know Dick Lee. He's a farmer here out on the flats, and he did this for years. It was big here at one time. There's a lot of iron here, what we call iron, which is pulling vehicles. So it's coming back, we're getting things going, Weezer seems to be a hotspot for it. So we're interested in it. If it's something that you guys are interested in, if we can get on the agenda for January, we can talk out some details, and we can tell you what we can offer to you, as well as you might be able to offer to us on that, so. And that's where we're at with it.
So what's the dates?
Be around July 14th to the 16th, somewhere in there, that weekend. But it'd be 2025. So we are already obligated over there at the fairgrounds for this year, so.
Well, thank you very much.
Be back. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, any other committee reports?
Thank you.
Are there any other committee reports? Okay, if there are, then can we have the department reports?
For November 2023, the Weezer Police Department had fourteen adult, sorry, adult arrests for fourteen misdemeanor, three felony. Juvenile arrests were ten misdemeanor, citations were eleven, infractions forty-eight. Calls for service were four hundred and nineteen, case reports thirty-seven, felony three, misdemeanor twenty-four, accidents three, and incidents seven. Oops. Uh-oh. City of Weezer Animal Control, dog complaints were fifteen. Six impounded, two returned to owners, nine were transferred out. We had five cat complaints, four impounded, two adopted, one transferred out. We had three wildlife and two livestock. City Weezer Ordinance complaints, we have one weed, one junk and debris, six abandoned vehicles, two parking, two camper occupancy, five VIN inspections, and five warnings. The wastewater department, the November flow for 2022 was 29,130,000. November's flow for 2023 was 30,980,000. 2022's BODs was 38,118 pounds. For 2023, the BODs were 34,712 pounds. Their projects this month were they hauled eighty-seven tons of bio solids to Clay Peak Landfield. They installed new belts on the belt press, they repaired a leak on the fourth main for the main lift. The water department, water production, November 2022 was 12.135 million gallons. November 2023 was 12.996 million gallons. The water department finished exercising all four, sorry, 945 valves in the water system, repaired leaking backwash for pond number one, inspected West 9th Sundance subdivision, insulated water meter pits, and continued Reservoir 1 rehab. The old roof was removed and a new one was installed. The power consumption for the electric department, October 2022 was 4,156,374 kilowatts. October 2023 was 4,038,432 kilowatts. The electric department replaced poles damaged by a fire in Diamond Trailer Park. They hosted a safety advance program inspection. They dropped the power lines for the riff removal on Reservoir 1. They helped remove awning from City Hall, and they started pulling wire in Sundance subdivision. The street department finished up valley cleanup, started leaf pickup, removed a load of leaves from Manscript Campground for the Forest Service. And the entire street department took a CPR and first aid class, and they welcomed a new employee. The rec department, youth basketball is in full swing. We have six boys teams and over fifty girls participating in the clinic. There are eight teams participating in men's preseason basketball, and registration for men's league basketball is still open. They're currently taking registration for women's volleyball, and the Elks hoop shoot is scheduled for January 6th at the middle school. The building department issued ten building permits this month, six single-family dwelling, one patio cover, two carport, one commercial building alteration. Mayor and city council, that concludes your department reports for November 2023.
And I think you've all had a chance to look at the minutes for the last meeting?
I'll move to approve the minutes as published.
I'll second.
Been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And I think the finance committee has had a chance to read.
Mayor, the finance committee met, and I would move to have the bills approved and sent on to the treasurer so warrants can be drawn for payment.
I'll second.
Been moved in second, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Hoag?
Yes.
Barberas?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Haper?
Yes.
Thank you. There is no unfinished business. And we will have as the first item of business an awards presentation from Arrowheart. And would you give your name and address, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, and city council. My name is Steve Fenske, I am the CEO and President of Arrowheart Adventure Camps, which has been around for about a decade now. We've been around in Weezer that long, but it has been. But since 2015, when we first started doing our recognition of the 9/11 attack on the Twin Towers, Arrowheart Adventure Camps has put on a softball tournament for our first responders. I can tell you, the first year was really exciting because my teens and my coaches went against the first responders, and we lost, which was expected. And then the following years, we tried to get the fire department to go against the police department, and that worked out for a while, except the fire department kept losing, the police department kept winning. And then we kind of mingled the team, and it worked quite well. And I figured, well, we need to expand our horizon. So I reached out, about three years ago, I reached out to Oregon, our neighboring state. And I said, you know, it'd be really nice if we get your first responders to go against ours. And they took on the challenge. Unfortunately, that challenge was met with defeat three years in a row. So during that period of time, I struggled to get a trophy made for the winning team. And I guess every trophy place I went to said, you're out of your mind, I can't build it, it's not gonna happen, it'll cost you a lot of money. I said, well, I don't want to pay a lot of money, but I want to recognize my first responders. So I did have one made, so the waiting is over. This is a mobile trophy, which means if Oregon decides to go against Idaho next year, they may end up winning it. That is, the chief wants to play. And we'll see what happens. But I'd like to invite Chief Smith and the players who played in the game, along with Jon Stewart, who's my head coach, and Brenda Lee, my executive up here, so that we can give this fine trophy. This trophy was made by Kenny Lukart. He did a great job. The fact that it even plugs into the wall, this lights up blue to represent law enforcement, and it represents not only law enforcement officers, but the firefighters during 9/11, along with an Arrowheart coin. As you can see, Idaho's got it three years in a row. I think Oregon wants to start the lower part of it, but as badly as they've played lately, I don't think that's gonna happen. So if I could get the officers over here and...
Where do you want us?
Where do you want us? Anyplace? Brenda Lee, get in here. Sir Chief Smith? Long way, but it's yours now.
Well, thank you. And I would like to thank Steve for putting this on. We are undefeated, we're gonna stay that way. Because I have some great officers that are very good ballplayers, and a couple of them are here today. Really appreciate you putting us, we have a lot of fun doing it. So I'd like to present it to the guys that actually won it this year, so.
This is my top hitter right here, this is my saying.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate your time.
Next on the agenda is to approve the 2024 liquor, beer, and wine licenses.
No, it's to approve the official.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. So, going back to the number-one item now, is to prove the November 7th official election results. And you all have a copy of that. So...
So, Mayor, could we have Natasha brief the top three elections into the record?
So the top three city council members for Weezer on November 7, 2023, were Herb Han with 557, 56 votes, Larry Hoag with 431, and Katie Von Breckholtz with 414.
Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve the official election results from the city election.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next on the item on the agenda is to approve the 2024 liquor, beer, and wine licenses. And you have that list before you?
Chief, if you'd like to come forward for a second.
Yeah.
I don't have the list, but...
The only one that was added was Dollar General.
Chief, would you happen to have any concerns?
Me and Natasha went over this, Chief Carl Smith, Weezer Police Department. Me and Natasha went over this list earlier, but apparently Dollar General was added to it, so. Just leaving it over here real quick. Now, we already talked about all these businesses, so I have no concerns with any of these that are on the list.
I have just one question. The Bus Bar Idaho, remind me what that is.
So they've come here a couple of times to Station 30, and they've had some...
Okay, that's them.
Yes.
Okay.
So it's a mobile.
Is that, that was them?
Yes. And currently, as I, I don't think they have a license. I think they're just on the list to be licensed, but they haven't got a, I checked with Alcohol Beverage Control in Boise, and they're not on the list yet, they haven't renewed their license as far as we know, so.
Okay.
So what we do with this list is we put anyone on the list that potentially is going to get a license. That way, January 1, they can have, they can sell and operate as normal. If they don't happen to get a license or come in, we just don't issue them one. But this way, approving them in December, by December 31st, they can get their license and continue business as normal.
And they've used a catering permit to serve alcohol at some of those functions there, so that's what that is.
Okay.
Are there any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Mayor, I move to approve the liquor, wine, and beer licenses for 2024 as listed.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to increase the meal per diem. And I'm not sure if you would like to talk on this, or if the chief would.
I think we can all, if you have things to add, the per diem, the raise and create.
So as of right now, the current per diem for meals is $15 for breakfast, $15 for lunch, dinner is $25, with a total in a day of $55. And currently, the employees are responsible for gratuity. Like, the tip is not covered in the amount that they are given for the day. I mean, as the chief can say, he sends officers all over for training, the city sends people all over for training, and it's almost impossible to find a lunch for $15. And so, if you want to...
It's pretty hard to even meet at McDonald's for $15.
Yeah.
It is.
Any order is.
And we're sending our guys out for training a lot, to the Boise area, and those figures are just unrealistic in this day and age, so we'd ask that they be increased.
So we're proposed to raise them for $20 for breakfast, $20 for lunch, $30 for dinner, totaled $70 a day. In addition, we would like to add that they are allowed to leave a 20% gratuity.
Did you, I know the budget's been approved, how does this affect any money that you've put aside for training?
It does not, it still comes out of our current budget, so each department's, whatever they've got aside for training, it comes out of that budget, so that money's already there. It's just authorization to be used for meals, I guess.
Okay, perfect.
So the one addition to that is, and I included a couple comparisons in the surrounding areas, surrounding states, and you can see that ours is low. We also asked that if, you know, the chief sends an officer or the city sends an employee somewhere, you know, Seattle or something like that, and as a group they go out to a more expensive restaurant, that their per diem for that day would not cover. We, with the supervisor's signature and okay, sometimes it would be okay with the supervisor's signature to go over that per diem for that meal.
A great example of that is when we have some training in Sun Valley, and it's, that's not even hostile.
There's no way you can eat there.
And I would also mention to the public that these prices are per meal, that they can't just put together the whole days and go have a $70 meal. These are numbers for just each meal.
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion that we accept the new per diem as written.
Second.
And allow for gratuity as well.
Been moved in second, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Blackwell?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Hoag?
Yes.
Haper?
Yes.
Barberas?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, excuse me, is to approve policies for workplace health and wellness, attendance and punctuality, professionalism in the public eye, personnel and payroll records, and solicitation, selling, and peddling. You all have copies of those policies in front of you. Would there be any questions?
Mayor, I have a couple.
On which one second?
Okay, we can start with wellness.
Which number is that? That first one?
The first one, or on my list?
209, Lou. Mine are just listed on my list of emails by their number, and so...
Oh.
209. Okay, thanks.
Okay, so item three. It says something about, let's see here. About, oh, item D, employees recovering from illness may be requested to, nope, that's not it. Well, somewhere on this, it says that you have to stay home until 48 hours after you're symptom-free.
It's the end of three before A.
Right.
You're in the red section just before A.
So I just, I guess I don't understand that, is that...
I think that is for, mainly for COVID. You know, that's the recommended period that you stay away from people before you're around other people again.
Oh, okay, so, but this looked to me like it pertained to everything. I was just wondering about, I guess I envisioned having to call your boss and say, hey, I feel just fine, but it hasn't been 48 hours since I had a fever, so I gotta stay, still stay home.
Do you have any comments on that, the question?
So, what this policy is trying to do is not only ensure that you, as an employee, don't come back before you're fully healed and feeling better and not contagious anymore, it also puts into place the employees that are still at work, where they're gonna feel safe and not exposed to, whether it be pink eye, COVID, the flu, you know, anything like that. And the 48 hours is just a guideline. If it's pink eye, obviously, and you've treated and gone to the medical, you know, guidelines that they've set forth for pink eye, that you could come back. This is just a general guideline of 48 hours for no symptoms, just for the safety of the employees at work and the employee that's home.
So it's not a mandate, it's a...
Just a guideline.
Guideline, recommends.
Oh, and it says with doctor's advice and...
Okay.
Yeah, so instead of really isolating each individual illness, this is just a guideline and a recommendation, that's the 48 hours.
Okay, yeah, I just, I just didn't, or I guess I misread it, didn't understand that. I thought it applied to everything.
I have one, Natasha and I have kind of talked about all these. The biggest one that I would bring to the council, she and I are gonna meet tomorrow and just do some grammatical things, some punctuations and stuff. But the policy applies to all employees, elected officials... to all employees, elected officials, and the city council. I told her, I said, it caught me as, well, so who are our elected officials? And so we've decided to take out one of those, and so I guess we could just say elected officials, and leave it at that.
Yeah.
Because we are the only electeds.
Right.
So, so that will come out of all of the policies and be changed to just one.
Anything else?
Which one?
Oh, I was, I was just wondering, the one for personnel files.
Okay.
And it says in there...
Two twenty-nine.
I think it's item three. It talks about a process for an employee having access, oops, excuse me, to their, to their personnel file.
Okay.
Or, excuse me, an employee's supervisor, only with the review of the city clerk. So I, I guess I'm just wondering why that is.
Okay, where you at?
I think it's, it says access.
Employee requesting access to personnel records, number four.
Yeah, that one too. What, oh, and that one says that they can, that it takes up to like seventy-two hours to, for that, for the process to be completed, for that to happen, and I'm just wondering what that process is.
Basically, it's just to retrieve the file, make sure, depending on what they're asking for, because your personnel file is different than your medical file. They are kept together, but they are completely separate files. So, and, and then it's just to give time for all that to be gathered and presented.
So is it an electronic file, or is it a...
No, it's physical file and involved.
Okay, so, so is it all in one, I guess I'm envisioning a file folder that you can just go and get in ten seconds. Is that...
And, and again, this is a guideline. Let's say I was not here, our human resource representative is, our human resource is not local, is not in the office, so if somebody comes in and asks for their personnel file or their medical file, and myself or obviously our human resources is not here, it's just giving, giving twenty-four to seventy-two hours for that. That's, that's the timeframe you have to produce it.
If so...
It's not saying it's going to take that long every time. It's just giving that timeframe of twenty-four to seventy-two hours to process the request.
If Natasha wasn't here and somebody came to me, good luck.
You'd have to wait until she got there. Okay, that allows for that.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's just giving that timeframe. It's not, not to say that it's going to take that amount of time every single time.
Okay. I think I'm good.
Any other questions or comments? Would there be a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the policies as listed in our agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, moving right along. Number five is not on the agenda now, and number six is to authorize the mayor to sign the East Commercial Keller Engineering Agreement. And to give you some background, we're trying to speed the process along. We have received notification that we will probably be awarded two million dollars for fixing a commercial out, or a commercial street. It has to go before the ITD Board for final approval. But we've had projects in the past where engineering has taken some time, and we have ended up in the middle of construction season trying to obtain bids. And the engineering company and, and I've had a good talk about that. And so this is an effort to take and get the engineering contract approved ahead of time, so we don't have to take and wait for another meeting to, for them to get started. Okay, and in the, in the grant, they allow fifteen percent for engineering, which is three hundred thousand dollars. We don't expect it to come to that amount, because some of the engineering has already been done, like on the, on the bridge portion of it. They said that it could be, that that needs to be modified. I emphasize to them that there better be very good explanations if it had to be re-engineered. Okay? But we are looking at approving up to the three hundred thousand dollars just in case, so that we can get, get going on the project and, and move it along and be at the right time of year for the bidding process.
So this, this approval would be contingent upon us, I guess, actually getting the grant?
On getting the grant, and also if they need that amount, it would be up to the amount of three hundred thousand.
So, Mayor, the agreement itself, and I apologize, I don't, did it come in a separate email? I remembered it coming in a separate email. So... Do you have to...
It's right here.
Oh, just one second. Hold that thought. I can't open mine. I have a question.
Scroll down.
One, the agreement.
If you two finger.
Okay, well, you go ahead. My question was going to be the timeframe for the agreement. Will it need the grant timeframe?
Yes.
Okay. So we've got it dated, it ends at a specific period. Okay, that's, was my question. December eleventh?
It needs to be...
It's from LTAC. It's, it's from LTAC, and it goes before IHG, before final approval. But we're very fortunate on this, there were a hundred and thirty-some-odd projects submitted.
Okay.
There were only thirty-seven that they recommended for approval.
Wow.
And so we're one of the thirty-seven.
Do you have a motion?
I definitely...
I do have a motion.
The mayor would like to offer, or make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the Keller Engineering Agreement? I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Chipman?
Yes.
Barberis?
Yes.
Haper?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Hoag?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Twelve minutes. That's what I was trying to figure out, is how long is our agreement good for? So, thank you.
And it, true that it... Okay, the next item on the agenda is for the Walker rezone request from Ag One to C Two. And this property is in the impact area, and so this is our recommendation to go toward, to the county P and Z. And so you have the information that was presented at the P and Z hearing.
So what I included in your packets, council, is the actual initial application, and then the findings and facts from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then also the minutes from their meeting. And just make note those are draft minutes. They have not been approved.
So any discussion or comments?
So, Mayor, it's my understanding, Planning and Zoning Commission, their recommendation to us is that this request not be approved. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Their facts and findings are pretty clear, so I appreciate the effort that P and Z put into their reports to us. And I think we have an obligation, until they're able to present the reasons for that undeniable need to change that zoning, which is what, you know, we have to have, then I don't think that, I don't think we can.
Okay, do you want to make that motion?
Uh huh. To the motion to deny, is that what it is?
We're making a recommendation to the, to the County Planning and Zoning Commission.
Mr. Mayor, then I motion that our city, our recommendation to County P and Z is that we deny this application for the rezone.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Haper?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Hoag?
Yes.
Barberis?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And last but not least on our agenda, would there be a motion to adjourn?
Also move?
For the last time.
It's been moved and seconded, and all in favor?
Aye.
And I just want to also add that this is the last full meeting for councilmembers Haper and Barberis, and want to say how much we appreciated your service over the years.
Yes, thank you.
We'll do, we'll do more...
Go Vandals.
Immediately retire.
Immediately root for the Vandals.